I call the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, and state of Arizona at seven o'clock.
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom. Councilmember Joanie Jacomino.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith is excused. Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Stephen Puckin, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Albert Chavet, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Britt Hanson, city attorney.
Okay, for the indication, I'd like to just ask us to take a moment here and reflect on the positives of living in this great community of ours. We have wonderful neighbors, friends, family, and I really would, at this time, like to thank our employees for all that they do, day in and day out. They truly are the backbone. They keep us moving forward, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Puckin for being here and leading us through this difficult time. So if we could just take a moment. The people join me for effect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, and before we get started, we are going number three and number five off the agenda, and those that have come to speak, number three may do so.
For the mayor's proclamation, we have a proclamation for National Day of Prayer. Whereas the religious freedom guaranteed by the First Amendment to the United States Constitution for the diversity of faiths practiced in America has made this nation a beacon for people seeking the freedom to worship according to their conscience. And whereas Americans of every race, background, and creed come together in churches, synagogues, temples, mosques, and their own homes to pray or meditate for guidance, wisdom, and courage. And whereas Bisbee citizens are a diverse people with a remarkable variety of cultures and religious traditions, and whereas, just as individuals rely on prayer or reflection for courage, hope, and renewal in their private lives, prayer or reflection is also turned upon during times of joy, crisis, and tragedy in our public life. And whereas Congress has called on our citizens to reaffirm the role of prayer and reflection in our society and to honor the religious diversity our freedom permits by recognizing Thursday, May 2, 2019, as the National Day of Prayer. And whereas the Bisbee ministerial fellowship is observing the National Day of Prayer with a program of prayer on behalf of the world, our nation, state, county, and the city of Bisbee at 12:00 noon on Thursday, May 2, 2019, at the Community Church of Warren located at 201 Arizona Street in Bisbee. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, identified by our pro town of the city of Bisbee, do hereby proclaim that Thursday, May 2, 2019, be declared as the National Day of Prayer in the city of Bisbee, Arizona, with hope that our citizens achieve their common goals of peace and understanding.
And we have Chief Chavet, who is going to introduce our nation.
Good evening, mayor, council, and members of the public. Once again, great pleasure to call up a couple new officers, well, one new officer tonight. Originally, I had two scheduled to come, but one of them is working, is actually out handling a call for service right now, so it doesn't look like he's going to make it. But I'd like to introduce Lonnie Carvahal Loper. He is a Bisbee High School graduate, class of 2015.
Yes, sir.
Born and raised here in Bisbee. His mother was a longtime employee with the Bisbee Police Department as a dispatcher for many, many years, and we welcome Lonnie here to us. We're proud to have him. He's graduated class of, he graduated with Celezzi in Tucson. He was the last cadet to graduate from that class, and will be sending him anytime soon because the price has gone up so high. But we're very happy with his service for us so far. And Ryan Bowie is the other officer. He has been a longtime dispatcher himself with the Bisbee Police Department. He's, they're both currently in week six, I think, field training. Six more weeks to go, and you'll see him out and about on his own. So again, this is Lonnie Carvahal, and the other officer, Lonnie Carvahal Loper, excuse me, and the other officer is Officer Ryan Bowie. So we welcome them to the Bisbee Police Department. Did you guys want to get, you want to get a low phone? Okay. Thank you.
Before we get started, I need to apologize. I've been sick, so my voice is kind of fading in and out, so I apologize before the meeting starts. We have Call of Public, we have Donna Pullen.
Thank you, council. I was actually here to speak to the agenda item number three, the sewer rates, and I want to thank Mr. Puckin for meeting with me last Wednesday to discuss the rates and go over also the 1 percent sales tax that is being investigated as to when it was instituted, how it was instituted, and if it was supposed to be a sales tax or not. And what I was going to present tonight was Article 6 of our city charter under Finance and Taxation. It talks about the taxing powers of the council, and that the council does have the power to levy and collect ad valorem and excise taxes if they are used for reserve funds. Any other sales tax has to be approved by the voters in a general election. And I think what is being investigated right now is in regards to that 1 percent tax, is if it actually was brought to a vote of the people back in the 1970s, and I don't believe that we have verified whether that tax has ever been legally voted on by the people. So I appreciate the fact that the item number three has been pulled from the agenda, and until that matter is resolved, I believe that a sewer rate increase is premature to be voted on this time, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Pullen. Doris Turner.
Counsel, public, I'm here again for the wastewater increase, and thank you, Joan Hansen and Bill, for responding to my emails. I have found, I have read the Well Done study, and I have the ordinance from the 3rd August, which is an improvement from several years ago. However, what needs to be addressed is a fairness. The ordinance stipulates 5,900 gallons wastewater per property, per apartment. I don't know whoever would use that much water, and that's not even counting vacant properties. If a property is for sale, nobody lives there, owner is still stuck with sewer and garbage. If it's a rental and it's vacant, the owner is still stuck with sewer garbage. We make the renters pay for the sewer garbage as part of the utility, and our owners already get stuck with 3.5 percent rental tax, which I have spoken to some owners recently, they interviewed me, they didn't know about the 3.5 percent rental tax, and they said, oh, you know, we'll think about it. Well, you know, give you three guesses how that went, if three don't count. But anyway, I really, really would like you to schedule a work session to, once and for all, hash out a fair agreement for the wastewater. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner.
I guess I was the third person coming before you in regard to the sewer and garbage fees along with the wastewater problem. I wrote to Mr. Puckin, and I've given you copies of whatever to him. I am trying desperately to understand and to have more transparency as to how the sewer and garbage fees are increased every year with no justification, it doesn't seem to me, in my email. Since I've lived here for four years, it was okay when my husband and I were working. We retire, and we live off of our social security. We're lucky enough that we are at poverty level, which understand the city does give people who are at poverty level a discount. We fall into crap, okay? So it's a hardship when my husband has a stroke. There's probably a lot of people in Bisbee with the same problem, you know, where they're trying to pay their medical bills and pay also the ongoing utilities. The sewer and garbage rate has gone over 40 years. It has increased from approximately $40 to the current rate of $80, and I just ask myself, you know, is there gold in the garbage or, you know, in the sewer? You know, what's going on here? And I would just like some transparency in regard to the issue and a fair, and a fair application of the fees. The sales, the 1 percent sales tax that Donna has mentioned, could it be a sustainable, you know, solution to the problem? And also, where, let's see, $400,000 transfer from last year's general, where did that money go? I'd appreciate some help in trying to understand and be clarified on this issue, and I thank you for your time and your work for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Loper. Under general business, we have accounts payable.
I'm moving with a accounts payable in the amount of $265,000, $265,967.18.
I second. We have a motion and a second on accounts. We have, are there any questions?
I have a question. On page six, when you go down to contract services under parks, the porta potty, port pots, that are rented, are those for, are those for Gherple? There's two porta potties, one for $126,000 and one for $7350. Because I know there's a porta pot out there. My point to my question is, is why do we pay monthly fees that we don't just put toilet out there? Yeah, a restroom, I should say. This is an ongoing monthly fee, isn't it?
Yeah, I think for parks it is. I know there's some other monthly fees in San Diego for porta pots over at the recycling. You know, I don't know why they put in permanent one except for cost, and then it's going to cost a lot less to pay monthly fee on a porta pot and to put a restroom. But maybe it hasn't been brought up before.
Can I just add to that? It has come up before?
No, it probably hasn't been brought up before, on request of it in Washington.
It was, and it was between the one at Gherple Park or Gorkburg, in Gorkburg, one, so, which I never understood because the kids and the families are the ones that use Gherple, but maybe, maybe we can look into it. Any other questions? Comments? Have any more questions or comments? Ms. Coronado, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino. Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Number two, approval of the consent agenda. I had an approval of minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on February 2019 at 7:00 p.m. B, approval of minutes of the special session of mayor and council held on February 12, 2019, at 5:30 p.m. C, approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on February 16, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. D, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on March 19, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. E, approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on March 26, 2019, at 3:00 p.m. And approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on April 2nd, 2019, at 7:00. Do we want any of those pulled? I move to approve the consent agenda items A through F.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items A through F. Do we have a call, Ms.?
Not on the consent.
All in favor of the motion, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item three has been pulled, so we move to number four, discussion and possible approval for acceptance of material equipment donation agreement from Arizona Public Service, standard.
This was a bunch of, a lot of furniture that was donated by APS, they had it delivered to us last Thursday, and so we didn't want to delay the delivery, so this was, the donation agreement, they required it to be signed before they were deliver it, so we went ahead and did that, so this was a formal acceptance.
Council, any questions? Any motion? I move to approve. I move to approve the material and donation agreement from APS.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the donation of equipment from APS. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Advisers, bill school. Discussion and possible approval of the assignment of hanger lease between the city and Fast Fab erectors in Tunenzi, Buzz Hale, Mr. Puckin.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. This item was on your agenda a little bit over a month ago and got pulled because of some clarification that we needed with regard to some of the terms and conditions of the existing agreement. This is an, this is an agreement to assign a lease at the airport that was previously held by Fast Fab fabricators, of which Mike Crepple, one of the principals, is now deceased, and it is, assuming you approve it tonight, is to be assigned to Mr. Lindsay Hale. Buzz is here tonight, just in case you have any questions for him. But after going back through and, of course, over a period of time, a lot of records got put in different places, and we finally got all the right records in front of the right people. And the only thing about the assignment, because if you read the contract, an assignment of this lease can be done with the permission of council and cannot be unreasonably withheld. However, one of the things that we did notice along the way is that there is an escalation clause in the contract that's tied to the CPI. In all the years that we have been collecting a monthly fee for that rent, and this is the city's fault, we have neglected to apply the escalator when it was appropriate to do so. Therefore, I spoke with the assignee, Mr. Hale, about catching up to the current year based on the CPI, and he's agreeable to do so. So the net impact of that is going to be that the lease that he will be paying the city will be increased by $23.29 a month, hardly a king's ransom, but if we keep up all our rents the way we're supposed to, we will generate revenue with them. So anyway, like I say, Mr. Hale has agreed. All of the other terms of the agreement remain in place, and he will be wanting to talk to us here in the very near future about making some further improvements on the lease they own. So hopefully, this is, this is a positive development for the airport, for the city, with a new owner and a new renter out there that want to do something to help the airport out. So staff recommends approval of the agreement.
I have one question. This actually, Brett, this might be for you. It says right here for a parcel, and it said that there's a hanger on the parcel, and then in the motion, it just says hanger lease, or releasing out the parcel or the hanger or both, and does that need to be worded in the motion with anything to do with the parcel?
The reason for the terminology of the hanger lease is that is what they were called when this first came to us. I understand your point, it was a vacant piece, now it's got a hanger on it, so originally it wasn't actually a hanger lease, it was a lease so somebody could build a hanger, so.
Okay. So it's fine?
Yeah, no.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
And just by further explanation, Ms. Johns, the, what we didn't want to do is we didn't want to disturb, we wanted to assign lease without disturbing any of the terms and conditions to make the transaction smooth and efficient. Like I mentioned to you a moment ago, Mr. Hale is probably going to be coming back and looking to make some further improvements with regard to this, so likely will be back to council for more action somewhere down the line.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a couple of questions. One is, is this property considered non-commercial or commercial?
It's considered airport commercial.
And under the initial minimum insurance, is the insurance by $50,000 rather than the $1 million because it is a commercial?
Actually, the insurance is the responsibility of the owner of the building.
Right.
And so he's responsible for paying whatever insurance he needs to pay to insure his building with his insurer.
So is the minimum $50,000 then according to the lease?
The minimum is $50,000 according to the lease because that was the price of the building to be constructed on the property at the time.
Okay. I don't see a copy of the insurance.
If Mr. Hale did send us a copy of the insurance, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. Can you come up and address that?
Yeah.
Up to the microphone, please.
Again, also thank you all for your hard work and endeavors, and especially Mr. Hanson and Mr. Puckin for their recent help. I did provide, insured by Farmers Insurance Company, and I provided them a copy of my insurance, which covers, and it shows the city in Bisbee is secondary insured on my $2 million liability policy. So it is.
Do you remember what the amount was for?
What's that?
What the amount?
Two million.
Two million, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I move to approve this under the hanger lease between the city and Fast Fab erectors in Tunenzi, Buzz Hale.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the assignment of the lease hanger with Mr. Hale and the city. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number seven, we have a discussion and possible approval to purchase the 2018 International Building Code as a preliminary step toward adopting the 2018 building codes, Mr. Ward.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, I asked if this agenda item would put on, this item would put on your agenda because I didn't want to be spending the public's money without verifying with you that the move for the 2018 was going to be acceptable. And our 2012, most of them were destroyed in the fire, and we've been getting by, letting by without you, but really, you get them replaced, and so now is a logical time for us to step up to a more advanced.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that the city of Bisbee purchase the 2018 International Building Code as a preliminary step toward adopting the 2018 building codes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the 2018 International Building Codes as a preliminary step toward adopting the 2018 building codes. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, number eight, we have a discussion and possible approval to allow mayor and council to go into agreement with the state of Arizona, Department of Defense, and the Bisbee Police Department for the transfer of controlled property for law enforcement use only. Chief Chavet.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council, members of the public. This is the 1033 program that I've talked so much about in the last year. This is a renewal of the contract. This is a renewal of the contract. This, what this does is this allows us to get government surplus property to press into service for law enforcement here within the city of Bisbee. This, this allows us to get a lot of things that we can use. We've gotten in the past year, office chairs, we've gotten tasers, we've gotten generators. If you remember the very first meeting we had here, the parking lot was dark and there was a big light set up outside, we got that big light, I'll get it from this program. We've got several vehicles from this program. In fact, one of them, the new cadets going to Phoenix for their academy class, they're driving it right now. So it affords us the opportunity to get a lot of things, a lot of equipment, that we wouldn't have the funds to just go out and buy brand new. We can get this stuff that Uncle Sam has deemed that they no longer need it, and they can give it to us and let us use it. Most of the property we get, we have to keep for just over a year, and after a year, then we can, we have the option of transferring it to another department, or to another department within the city, or destroying it if we'd be, if it's unserviceable, or selling it at auction. The one requirement for the contract is any funds made during an auction have to go back to support the 1033 program. We can, the funds generated from an auction of 1033 property can't go into the general fund. That's the only real stipulation. Most of the equipment we're able to give, we've gotten from Davis-Monthan Air Force Base. We have had to go to Barstow, California, and to Camp Pendleton in California to pick up some equipment. But the money that we, the money we've saved going to get that equipment has been, you know, it's even the travel, the lodging to go pick something up is still cheaper than buying it brand new. We've got some ATVs, we've got some Conexes storage buildings, metal buildings that we're using now for additional storage. We've got some laptops, very, very expensive laptops that we've been able to press into service, we've got some printers. So so far, the program for $250 has been very good. The only cost to us beyond that is the cost of the shipping to get whatever item it is here. It's a worldwide program, so we could end up spending a lot of money if we have something shipped from another country. We've been very frugal on that, made sure that what we're getting is definitely worthwhile, and thus far has been.
Any questions?
So when you buy something through the program, it comes out of the, the department comes from the city money, right? So the, right now, we don't purchase anything from the, from the program. We pay the $250, it's required to be a member of the program, and then the property that we get, we have to, we search a website, basically, and have a volunteer who comes in for these, and we just search the website. We request the property through the website, and if it's granted to us, the only thing we have to pay for is the cost to get it shipped from point A to point B. So that's it. So you know, the computers, we got, I think the original cost on those computers, those laptops, about $2,300, brand new. We got 13 of them, and all the costs was $400 it took to get it shipped here. So it's, it's definitely a benefit to us, and we don't get everything that we ask for, but we've gotten a lot of things that have really helped us out a lot. Laptops, although they are laptops, are a little bit more appropriate for an office setting or professional setting. They're not the rugged, tough books, Panasonic books that you see the officers using in the field. You know, they're not going to take a hit, you're not going to be able to drop them, or you know, it's, they're not built to stand up to the kind of work that we put our stuff through, but they will do us very well in the office, sitting on a desk, on a desk, you know, utilizing it as a desktop. It's still money that we save by not having to go buy desktop computers.
And then after a year, you can pass those on to somebody else if you get all the computers, or if you get the rugged ones of this.
And they, they afford us the opportunity. The last time I went up, we went and got 40 chairs, office chairs. That's what we have. Most of our offices, the offices, our officers, sergeants are using those chairs in their offices. We have those chairs in our conference room. Out of the 40 we picked up, we kind of pieced together, we got 20 good chairs out of it. So they afford us the opportunity to get a little extra, knowing that some of it's going to be parts. We still have to hold accountability, we tag everything that comes in, it's accounted for, and we have the potential to be audited, to make sure that we're accounting for all the property that's been given to us. And thus far, between Deputy Chief Long and Bob Lee Shaw, our volunteers, they've kept a really good handle on that, and we've been fortunate to get some really good items out of the program.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to allow mayor and council to go into an agreement between the state of Arizona, Department of Defense, and the Bisbee Police Department for the transfer of controlled property that is in excess to law enforcement agencies for law enforcement use only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go into an agreement between the state of Arizona, Department of Defense, and the Bisbee Police Department for the transfer of controlled property for law enforcement use only. All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Number nine, city managers report. Mr. Pocken.
Thank you and good evening again. There's some late minute reviews, so we'll have a couple of extra items on here tonight. First of all, I just wanted to update you on the status of public works director recruitment. As you all know, a person had been identified and hired sometime before, before I arrived to ultimately determine he didn't want, he didn't want the job. So since the job was posted open till fill, we are going back right now through some of the resumes from the prior recruitment to, in fact, we started to re-interview some of the folks that had been interviewed the first time by the other interview team, and so we're feeling pretty confident that we'll be able to identify someone fairly quickly. And also, we did, we've done interviews for the tourism director position. We have narrowed the position down to a one individual that we would like to carry on further with since, and the interview team felt that since there was considerable input on how this position should be paid and what the job description should be like, the I Bisbee Committee ought to get a chance to also interview this candidate. So what we're going to do is we're going to try and get I Bisbee and this candidate together at the earliest opportunity, like to be next week if we can arrange it, so that they could also take a look at this candidate. I really can't reveal anymore about that at this point because I can't identify who the person is, but it was someone that we identified as being highly qualified and probably an extremely good fit for not only the position but for Bisbee. So stay tuned on that, hopefully at the next council meeting, we can start making some introductions. Also, just a reminder, budget workshops start Monday, 5:30. We have, yeah, I know you're all excited. We have it scheduled for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at 5:30, right? Unless I hear any objection, we're going to start with wastewater. Wastewater is the most complicated and poses probably the most conversation that we're going to have of any department that you'll be looking at for the budget the next year. So we want to, we want to discuss that one while everyone is still fresh. And so we'll start Monday evening with wastewater, and then we'll start moving through the rest of the budget then until you guys are too tired and want to wait and want to break until Tuesday. Now, just based on my past history of doing this, with you all, I can't recall it ever taking four days. I don't know what's happened since I left, but my personal belief is that we ought to be able to do it in no more than three, and if it's possible, we could do it in two. It all depends, it's up to you how much that you want to discuss and at what level of detail that you want to discuss it, so. Anyway, but it'll be all there for you. Are you going to send out a packet in advance with that?
Thursday.
Thursday, so Thursday, expect to receive a draft of the next fiscal year's budget. Also, we put in front of you tonight a recycling survey from ADQ, this is for the calendar year of 2018. I had a request from one of the council members for some information about how much recycling we were actually taking to the marketplace. These are the statistics for the last complete calendar year. I suspect we've probably got a survey like this for several years running, so if anybody would like to see surveys from prior, years prior to 2018, just let me know, and we'll have them copied for you as well. I mean, it's no secret, the recycling atmosphere has changed a lot, and it is continuing to change, and there's a lot of uncertainty with some of the commodities that we currently collect, how much of the future there is for them, where we're going to go with them. So we're probably going to be having to start thinking about and start discussing some changes in that program before too long, but probably after I'm gone. And then, and this is just for your information, we, all of our DOC inmate labor was full today. Some of you may have been made aware of, or have seen a YouTube video that was produced by a person who will only identify himself as Jim, who has been insisting on videotaping inmates at work with our crews, the focus last week was in Grassy Park. The gentleman did tape that some length and put it up on YouTube. He called me for a statement, which I did not give him because I was unaware of the video until he told me. And so I did view the video. DOC was aware of the video. As you all know, there's a longstanding policy at the Department of Corrections that pictures are not to be taken of inmates. The gentleman was informed that it was the policy of DOC not to take pictures of inmates, and he insisted on doing so anyhow. So today at noon, Chief Chauvin got the call and relayed the information to me that all of our crews, wherever we have them, they've all been full. So we'll be having discussions with the Department of Corrections over the next few days in an attempt to bring it back. And I guess I want to, in the defense of our employees, because there were, two of our employees were also extensively videotaped during the course of this, and as far as I'm concerned, they handled it the way they were expected to handle it. They informed the gentleman of the inmates not being able to be videoed. When he would not seize to videotape the inmates, they packed everything up and they moved on to a different location, okay? So now, if you watch the videotape, you'll get a different opinion from the gentleman who did the taping. That's fine. He has his First Amendment right, and we protect it. But we all know the First Amendment can have its consequences. This time, the consequence wasn't against him, it was against the city. So we lost about a dozen inmate labor for the time being. We don't know if we'll get it back, but we're going to try and get it back as soon as we can. So, but it's out there, I want you to be aware of it, so. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Pocken?
I move to adjourn.
A second? We have a multiple second.
Aye.